Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 20th Board meeting. I'd like to lead off with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing and public comment session for the tax cap override. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. So let me just do a little bit of lead in for this for everybody and then we'll get into the comment section. I'm just gonna read something I drafted. "This year is probably the first time that we're asking for your support to possibly increase the tax levy over above the state's recommendation. This is still preemptive planning because it's not finished with the budget and we have more work to do. Our goal every year is to build a resilient village. We wanted to protect the village from the impacts of climate change, provide a vision for the future of our village, make our village safe for all, and invest in our infrastructure. So why are we doing this? The board is continuing to deal with the effects of the budget on our budget with rising costs of materials and our salaries. We also have made major progress on many projects, but each project costs us a lot more than it used to, and the state has not increased any funding that it provides us. We secured grants and are continuing to apply for more. These grants reduce the impact to you, our residents, and several of these grants require a financial contribution from the village. Our projects are large and they cost more to implement. Retaining and attracting good people does cost more. And we've already been notified about increases in retirement, health insurance, and our services. So as before, we listen to you to make our budget and to make investments in our future. The 24-25 budget in part is driven by all of you. You ask for a new vision for our future to replace the 30-year-old comp plan. You ask for us to protect our drinking water. And you ask for better roads and better safe routes to school. And we plan to deliver on all that." I'm gonna end right there and open up the comments. Sure. Come on up. Introduce yourself. Name, address.
My name is Adam Santini. I live on 389 Salisbury Highway. I guess my comment applies to what you're saying because I heard you talking about safer routes to school. And that's what I was told was the reason for the new stop sign that went in?
It drove that, yes.
I guess, I don't understand. There's a lot of stop signs on that road already that I don't understand, and this is just the latest one that I don't understand. I don't understand how it makes it safer or how it helps the flow of traffic through town. Like, what are the... I did do some research and look up what the Department of Transportation says as far as when a new stop sign should be put in. I was wondering if you could tell me what, on that checklist of things, that area meant.
I'm not sure I understand your question, but we did get a...
For example, how many cars a day pass on that road?
We did a highway study, a very comprehensive highway study, on number of traffic and 1,500 cars a day, was it?
I don't remember the numbers offhand. We did do traffic...
Like ballpark?
We did traffic data collection. We did counts of actual cars through that intersection. And we used that data to review what's called the warrant for a stop sign, for a four-way stop. And it did meet the warrant requirements.
That's like the opposite of the information I have from the Department of Transportation. They have like 6,000 cars per day.
Traffic engineers reviewed it for warrant. So there's more than just number of cars that factor in. There are safety considerations as well, and there's geometry of the intersection as well.
I mean, it talks about that too. It talks about like, well, how many accidents have we had at this intersection that require intervention?
So we had an average of one per year. Traffic accident per year. But just so you know, the Department of Transportation reviewed our plan and agreed and supported putting in a four-way stop.
Okay. So there's no way even using their own website to protest the stop sign or any other stop signs on that road?
You can always submit a comment and post objections to anything that we thought.
Is the point of the stop sign to stop or to slow down traffic?
Stop. It needed to stop traffic. It needed to stop traffic and protect not only cars going through there, but pedestrians as well. And there's a lot of school children that use that intersection, whether walking or biking, whatever, that needed the... We needed additional safety factors for that. It's more than just cars that... This is Brandy Nelson from Time Bond, by the way, who led the engineering effort on this. And how much did that cost? 6,000-something? I don't remember that number. For the engineering study, it was a little over six grand.
I mean... I don't... I spend my time working. I'm not involving government. But I would say like that sounds like an excessive waste of money when you could just use common sense. Like, why can't... You teach kids how to cross the road. I mean, you're not gonna put stop signs up on 308, which is a busier road. And kids who live in the village and walk to school, walk past the old Rhinebeck Deli right there, and they cross that road. You know, you look both ways.
We don't have jurisdiction over that road because it's a state road. Where this road is, is a village road, and we have jurisdiction.
Right. But don't you see how this doesn't make a lot of sense? The busier road, there's heavier traffic.
That's up to State Department of DOT to implement whatever's needed. If there was a reason for it, we could petition for that, and they would look into it and do the investigation.
Do you guys ever travel on that road?
I travel it almost every day, and the flashing lights sometimes has caused a lot of confusion, I've seen.
Right. Confusion.
Have you seen that? That is called confusion?
Yeah, usually people...
Do you think that having a stop sign might cause less confusion?
Some part hasn't. Some parts...
Well, one, it's new, but two, I think it will.
Yeah, but just because people are confused because they're not paying attention doesn't mean you should punish everyone who uses that road, you know? To cause them to stop and then speed up for no particular reason. Other than it makes you see...
Again, if you... If people are... If there's evidence that there's confusion on the road, then whether I'm behaving properly or not, you know, if others aren't and/or others are confused, then I feel as part of me as part of a person in society, we need to kind of look at... I gotta look at the sensibility of it, not just me.
But why go straight to the most aggressive...
Now, you're second. We're having... We're in the public hearing about tax cap override. We do have a public comment section coming up.
Okay. Well, I would reply because you're talking about commuting and you're talking about raising more money, and you just wasted six grand with the stop sign that no one wants. Don't you see how like people wouldn't want to keep paying the government for like getting in their way?
We held many... We held several meetings on this, and consensus was by the public and by us that we needed it.
Yeah, but like I said, like people spend their time working, you know? They're trying to get to work. Until you put an obstruction in their way, they're not gonna know. I don't want to be here right now.
I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but it was warranted.
Well, what about the one right down the street from that on Beach Street? It's a three-way stop. The only people on Beach Street are people who live on that dead-end drive.
Again, we're in a public hearing for the budget.
You come to a stop sign?
If you would like to come back during the public comment section, please come back up.
Okay.
But I'd like to keep the public comment session for the budget right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Public comment section still open. Does anybody have any comments in regard to the tax cap?
I'm sorry I'm late. Is it just comments about...
Angela, you wanna... You gotta come up.
Sorry, I was coaching. I wanted to comment and thank you all for all of your efforts that have gone into improving the walkways. I have two children that commute on bike to CLS. And we also do a number of walk-to-school events. This is a small village, but we could do better for our kids. And if that takes doing studies, and if that takes a tax levy increase, I'm all for it. There's been a couple accidents. We have confusing intersections. We have striping that needs to happen, which is expensive, and we're small. And there's a lot of money that needs to go into a lot of other things too. So I am all for that.
This is known as the pregnant pause? Get your courage. Wanna say something? Having that, I'm going to close... Make a motion to close the public comment section.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. So now we're at the motion to move forward on the public hearing. And I'd like to make a motion that will allow us to... To log the resolution that we introduced back in February, not to log the resolution...
Do you want to do this during resolutions, or do we want to do it now?
No.
No.
Now.
Okay.
Yes. We're good now.
So is it a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, that was the first, and now it's a motion to adopt the...
Okay, because you said comment, so...
Yes. Oh, close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I already did that, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very close.
And I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for 2024 that we introduced on our February meeting that allowed... That provides the Village Board the authority to override the provisions of the general rule. And whereas the public hearing... The public hearing held today, 6 o'clock, on Village Hall, right? Said hearing was duly published and in which all time interviewed parties had an opportunity to be heard. Now therefore, being enacted, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck as follows: To authorize the property tax levy in excess of the limit established in the general rule.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm gonna second... I keep shouting about this, but I am going to continue to express my frustration with the state of New York that they require us to do this before we actually have a budget against which to actually say what we're gonna do. And so I sometimes feel like the fact that we have to have this conversation separate from actual nuts and bolts is frustrating. But given everything that we know is approaching, and given, you know, the increase in costs of current projects in just the last couple of years, sidewalks included, I think it's important for us to give ourselves the option to go over the 2% limit as long as we're very careful about how we use that power.
Agreed. Did you?
Yeah. I mean, to me, this is a one-off move that if we have to make it, we have to make it. I'm disappointed that we've gotten this... That we got this place, but at the same time, is reflection of all of the things that we've been asked to do and that we're trying to do. And we've had some mid-budget increases, salary increases, and that's just to keep our hiring competitive with other municipalities. It's not like our employees are holding us up or anything. It's just because we've had people walk away from jobs at the village because we couldn't offer them enough money. So we had to raise our salaries in order to hire new employees. So I never have been in this position before, very upset to be here. But having worked with this budget and seeing that this is a, you know, this is a one-year thing, I think it will be acceptable, and it needs to be whatever. If we do go over that 2% levy increase, it needs to be as minimal as possible.
I think you all know my opinion because I've been voicing it very a lot.
You and Karen have been hopping up and down about this for six months now.
Yes. So I don't think anybody's surprised by my comments and why my feelings are about getting here. And the multiple warnings I've given everybody to say, beware. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're gonna go into the public comment section. John, come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Rossi. I'm 53, by the place. Just be a few minutes, I promise. Within a few minutes.
Is that mic on, John?
I don't think so.
No, you just need to be like really close to it.
Am I close enough?
There you go.
Okay. And I'm short too. Last week, I did reach out to the board through an email, and I was seeking what the timeline would be to reinstate the ADA compliant path of Crystal Lake. And in that exchange of emails with the board, a question was posed to me, and that question was, "What's your problem, John?" So I'm here tonight because maybe the tone could have been a little different, but it's a reasonable question. It's a fair question. My problem is I have a problem when others have a problem accessing the services they're entitled to. But how I feel about it, whether it's a problem or not, or it really doesn't matter. What we should be just looking at is the ADA law. And the interesting thing is that the law acknowledges that interruptions of access are gonna happen. That's clearly acknowledged. But there are three things that we're supposed to do. One is, we need to work really hard to make sure that it's resolved in a timely fashion. We also need to make sure that it doesn't recur, that it doesn't repeat. And the third thing that we're obligated to do is to provide an interim solution. So I wanted to suggest that there is a product that's pretty widely used known as Mobi Mats. And a Mobi Mat is... If you're not familiar with it, it rolls out like a red carpet and it rolls back up. And it's used at beaches and at grassy fields areas, just like up at Crystal Lake. So the protocol of the board, based on a resolution that this board passed, I guess a year ago, if you have a concern or complaint about ADA access, you're supposed to write it out and give it to our village clerk, Martina, well, Village Clerk Clinton. I've done that here this evening. I've provided... I'm not making copies for everyone because that's not my job, and the conflict that Martina circulated. And I'm just want the board to please consider what... Not only consider, but what really legally obligated to do is to provide some sort of interim solution. I enclosed a picture of a Mobi Mat and someone, you know, using it and the website URL. So that's it. I'm happy if anyone has any more comments or questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Come on up. On the back.
Construction, Susan?
Guess whose road is still not paved? Hello. Susanna Rente Manor Road. I think I'll put my speaker into this. Can you hear? I'm also loud, so I'll just talk.
You're a teacher.
I know. I happen to be able to project to the back of every room. Susanna Rente Manor Road. I know last year I was on the list for paving. Just wanted an update.
We have not made the list this year. Not yet.
You know, are you aware of the problem we ran into last year?
Yeah, you said something about the crown of it.
Well, not only the crown and the drainage and the bid that we had the contractor come in, and then he sized the road. He said, "I can't do it for that price," and he jacked up his price. And that was outside of our ballpark.
Right, and there was a materials piece to it as well.
Yeah, so we had to punt on that piece, on that section of the road.
Okay. So keep me updated.
Certainly will.
I'll probably ask again next month. Thank you. Susanna, just so you know, this is not gonna make you happy. Center Street is happening before anything else. Well, I figured. Yeah. So...
It's for the water project, but...
Yeah, so we'll see basically how much money's left over. I just like to keep putting the bug in your ear, you know? Thank you. We do appreciate that.
But Center Street was...
I do love it.
From transparency...
We do love it, actually.
Twenty... The Center Street was in this year's budget, '23, '24.
Not in '24, '25.
Not '24, '25. So I think Susanna's question is, what are we doing going forward?
It's a great question.
Yeah.
We haven't had that one yet.
Any other public comment? You just... Yeah, if you would like, three minutes or less, that's for the public comment. You've already...
Well, I think what I left off, I was talking about like you guys went to the most aggressive... Second most, I guess a stoplight would be more aggressive. Why not try and yield some?
So excuse me. I think you're a little late to this party in that we've been working on this for months, if not a year. And we've been hearing from many, many residents about their concerns for students walking through that intersection, for themselves walking through that intersection. They don't like it. We've had our police...
I don't understand what you're...
Let me finish. We've had our police monitor the intersection, see how people are behaving, and what kind of car interactions there are. And basically, after all of that, including the traffic study, including hearing from people, we decided that it would be safer for everybody and more effective for pedestrians if there would be a second set of stop signs, one northbound and one stops... One southbound. And that's after a lot of consideration. Hasn't been that way since forever.
I know.
Right?
But it's been fine, right?
So... No.
Well, so part of what happened is, you live in the town, so you might not have heard about this, but there were a couple of bicycle accidents in the fall.
There was one.
There was one bicycle accident in the fall near that intersection.
Car accident.
Yeah, and then there was another car accident. And then that intersection is, you know, you've been driving that intersection for a long time. It's confusing. There's the one-way road that comes in, you know, who stops, who's supposed to stop? You know, everybody gets sort of locked up at that intersection.
Don't you get it after the first time you go through it?
Well, apparently not. And so the solution of basically just getting everybody to stop before they make a decision was the one that we decided to do, given the level of concern that the public raised about the safety of that intersection. I fully appreciate that a lot of people have sort of had to rethink their commutes and their routes because of it. I fully appreciate that it's taken, you know, sort of a minute to 30 seconds, you know? It slowed everything down a little bit. You're certainly not the first person who's expressed some concern about the number of stop signs that are cropping up in the village. But the thing about living in a densely populated village is it's important for the traffic to slow way down between bicycles and our elderly population and the kids, and...
But that's not what stop signs are for?
That's helpful.
No. Stop signs are to stop traffic at intersections.
Right.
And in order for our kids to get across that intersection safely.
But how does that stop them from still having to look both ways and cross when there's no traffic?
With any luck, we do hope that they do look both ways and cross.
I mean, why? It's the same procedure. I don't understand.
For somebody crossing, yes. They still have to observe the laws. Bicycles need to observe the laws as well as people crossing at the intersection.
Right.
There is some inherent safety aspect that needs to happen by everybody. But one of the things we can eliminate is cars. Right? And the cars being a contributor to that. There's a lot of traffic in the morning and in the afternoon with school traffic going over there. At the same time, there's a lot of students. This gives everybody that opportunity to stop, observe, and cross.
So that's the goal, to eliminate traffic going through there?
No, it doesn't eliminate...
No, eliminate the car component of the dangerous situation.
Yeah. By forcing the cars to stop, then the kids actually have an opportunity to cross without sort of like, you know, playing a little chicken. So that's... That was basically the goal here.
But you're... You're absolutely 100% correct. There's some inherent responsibility of parents to teach their kids how to cross a road when living in a village. There's some inherent responsibility for people running on bicycles, no matter what their age are, to observe the laws in the village and make sure that they stop at stop signs. Right? There's some inherent responsibility for people driving cars to obey the law and stop at a stop sign. So it takes a community to make this all work, and what we're trying to do is make that work for the safety of everybody.
Well, it sounds like you're just penalizing people and cars.
No. We're making it safer...
We're just making them stop everywhere.
Why is stopping a stop sign...
Well, you're not supposed to stop it.
Alright, so...
It's supposed to be like the...
I think we could go on and on, and you could come in. I'm gonna extend an invitation for you to come into the office, and we can continue this conversation.
Okay.
Alright?
One more thing.
And...
It sounded like you said you spoke to a lot of people. It sounded like the people who are complaining is who you spoke to. But now that it's up, do you actually think the majority of the town? Like, how many people in the town would have to like sign a petition to say, "I think this is unnecessary," for you to say like, "Well, maybe we didn't hear from anyone?"
You know what? Good question. Never had people sign a petition to remove a stop sign yet. So I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
But if we were presented with one, we'd certainly consider it. That's our job.
Alright. Okay. I'll take you up on your invitation.
Any more, please do. Any more? Anything else? Going once? Going twice? Closing the public comment section?
Tire a police officer.
Yes.
Gary, Pete is actually on his way.
Pardon?
Pete's on his way. I don't want to leave him alone.
Oh.
I don't know. Let's get into it.
Can we do the treasurer report first?
Well...
If he's coming?
He'll be here in a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes? Alright. If you want. I don't think we can get him, but that's fine. You want to go into the treasurer report, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The treasurer's report is for the period ending February 29th. The general fund ended the month with $552,978. The water fund ended the month with $92,932.83. And the sewer fund ended the month with $177,557.27. We earned 5.24% on New York-class investments. And vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $92,831.23. In the water fund, $34,579.89. In the sewer fund, $33,884.55. We had a water system improvement bill for the capital project in the amount of $24,389.43. And we had one bill in escrow for $3,526.
I'd like to make a motion to accept treasurer's report. Second. Question?
Just to pay the budget.
Pardon, sorry.
Okay. For the budget, two budget workshops meetings were held already on the 20th and 27th with preliminary discussions on the proposed capital projects and the water and sewer funds. Upcoming budget meetings, March 26th, we'll do highway court and fire. March 28th, police, environmental, and general. And April 2nd, we'll do a discussion of the total budget, and the public hearing is set for the regular meeting on April 2nd. In the water and sewer, water and sewer monthly bills were sent out in the amount of $62,305.58. Those are due March 25th. Billing and adjustments as signed up by Mayor Bassett are on the files and presented for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I will present budget amendments next month.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
All right, we're gonna go back. Sergeant Dunn has just joined us, so we're gonna back up to the police, to hiring of a police candidate. They won't let me go on without you, Pete.
Okay, thank you.
So if anybody has any questions, I think we can answer them. So let me just lead into this, as everybody knows, for quite some time, we've been down several officers in our police department. In fact, we're down four officers, and we've been actively trying to recruit. We've taken a lot of measures to be able to be competitive and attract people to join our police department. And the last one was actually doing an MOA, which we presented it last month, which raised our starting salary up to get us more competitive. During that process, a person came forward from the Hyde Park Police Department. Daniel Ferrara came forward and said he was interested in joining as a part-time police officer while continuing to work for the Hyde Park Police Department. He's currently a sergeant in the Hyde Park Police Department. Comes to us with a lot of experience, not only from the Hyde Park Police Department, but from New York City Department of Police, where he walked the beat, spent the time.
Ooh, does he like walking the beat?
He liked, I'll get to that part. Don't jump that.
Spoiler alert.
And so, in prior to that, he did work for the New York City Department of Environmental Policy. So he's gone through the complete review, you know, the vetting that our police department does on all of his background. He has approval from Hyde Park to also work jointly with us. And I'm gonna say right now, it's got to be, Daniel was supposed to join us this evening, but he got called back into work. The life of, the life of an officer, right? But Pete, Sergeant Dunn and I interviewed Daniel last week. I found him quite enlightening, is the word I want to use. Young gentleman, wants to work, which is great. One of the things I said, "I don't want you to come here and, you know, now that we've increased our salaries, but then now jump to the next higher-paying salary because it's very competitive out there." And I said, "If I could hold you to a contract, I would." He said, "But I'm not leaving. If you hire me, I want to stay." He's very much interested in working for the Village of Rhinebeck. As I said, he wants to make more money in terms of working for also for Hyde Park. I then questioned him on his New York City police beat, Lydia. And I said, "One of the things I'm gonna hold you accountable for is walking beat, right?" And he said, "Listen, I've done this. I know how to do it, I like to get out of my car, I've been used to doing that in the city. I kind of miss that because Hyde Park is not a walkable kind of place like the Village of Rhinebeck is." So, yes, Lydia, to answer your question, I put it on. And I said, "I'm gonna hold you accountable for not leaving right away and jumping the next higher salary and walking the beat for us." And he was delighted to hear that we were going in that, in that direction. You know, he has all the credentials that any officer needs, and to be promoted at this age to sergeant in the Hyde Park Police Department shows something to his credibility and to what he's doing, so. I want to make a motion to hire Daniel Ferrara as a part-time police officer.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Pete?
Does he live in Rhinebeck, or is he?
No, he lives in.
Poughkeepsie.
Poughkeepsie.
Poughkeepsie. Yeah, he lives in Poughkeepsie. Which is okay. We don't hold that against him.
We know that's my kid.
Pete, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the mayor's end of all, he's my job.
This brings, so we have a part-time force and it brings our total manpower right now to.
We're still down three.
To Officer, thank you, Officer Palmer, Stephen.
Currently, we'd be down three, but our Mr. Farron.
So we're.
We're in like 11?
What's the head count, 11?
Fifteen is our head count. Fifteen is where we would like to be.
We're currently at 11, and so this brings us to 12.
That is good.
Yeah. I'm here to help.
Just wanted to check, so, so we're still down three, our time's still looking, but.
Yes, and so we're, if anybody wants to be a police officer, please raise your hand. We'd love to have you. I don't see any hands. All right, so, having done that, but if anybody knows anybody, please send them. We have a great police department. The fact that it's all part-time, they can work another job, a full-time job, and do this, and we don't care what the other job is, well, we should care a little bit. But we have people who are contractors, who are contractors, we have people who are firefighters, we have people who are police, belong to other police departments, all right, that work for us in a part-time capacity to help fill our roles. And what we require them is to work a minimum of 32 hours a month. It's not a lot, but 32 hours a month is what their requirement is. They have to be available for 60, but that's the minimum per the contract that they have to be available to come and work for us.
And are we still paying for the training and the school if necessary?
If there's, if somebody comes through and they want to go to the academy, yes. We will vet them out, and if approved, then we will send them to the next available academy. But then that requires a, a real commitment to staff. Any other questions?
When did you start?
When did you start?
As soon as we get the rest of the paperwork done with the state of New York, so it'll probably be at least about a month.
Yeah.
Approximately about a month.
Time for someone.
Excellent.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on.
It's great.
Yes, I'm so happy.
Thanks for you.
All right, we're going on to purchase requests. Task order number 42, which is, let me get to my. Oh, this is the one for our water department, and it's really to upgrade our emergency plan and specifically in the area of cybersecurity. It's required by the state that we do this, so it's an update to our current emergency plan. Tyne and Bond has worked with us before on developing our emergency plan. In fact, they did develop our emergency plan for us for our water department. And so we reached out to them, and for a lump sum fee of $3,800, they will work with our water department to update our plan. Anything to add, Brandy?
No, I think you've covered it.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept task order number 42 for our system emergency plan update.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Cybersecurity, ma'am.
Yes. It's required. Just so you know, right now, today, I'll say something, we don't have any outside communication into our plan that somebody could take over and manage our controls. That's really the threat that you need to worry about.
Yeah.
Because that has happened, right, at other water plants. We, it's not that we have a wall, but we don't have any controls that can be accessible by outside controls. I'm not saying about the future when we do the upgrades, but where we are today. But we need to still build this into our plan. This is a very, this has happened, and we don't want it to happen to us.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. Doughboy cleaning. Every three to five years, the doughboy across the street needs to be, it's copper. Let me back up, just so everybody understands, it's copper. And copper, you know, happens to copper over time. So it went for a long time, and Martina, was it four years ago when we looked it up, we did it?
Yes.
We did it four years ago. We hired a firm, there's a specialty firm, it's a one-off. So we didn't go out and bid for this because there's only one company that does it in the area, down in Fiskville. And asked him to quote us again. The price went up $100 from four years ago to doing it today, so it's $2,100. To clean, buff, wax, preserve our doughboy. Being that there's only three in the world, this is something I very much want to preserve.
Yeah, I would say.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the cleaning for $2,100, which would clean the, clean the surface, have a statue with the solution, brush and pressure washer, apply a wax protectant on the surface, and clean the granite bases with the same, with the same process. Payment is due 30 days from completion. And the goal is to have it done before Memorial Day.
Good.
Great.
Okay, smart. Any questions? Part two of this, I'm gonna get to. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, part two, which we did do before, if you remember looking at the doughboy on each side of it, there's plaques that have the names of everybody that served in the service.
Different plaques.
What?
These are different plaques.
Oh, not the ones on the side?
Those are included.
He, this is one on the doughboy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're right. I thought it was including the ones on the side though.
No, the $2,100 includes the ones on those side, this is for the plaques down at.
Legion.
Legion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you, Martina. So, we've never cleaned the plaques down there at all, and they're, we have.
Legion Park?
Yeah, they're in really need of cleaning, but it is.
$750.
$750 more to be able to do that. So it will be to drill out the rusted nails and screws and all the hardware, prep the surface by removing the old patina, re-patina, which is apply a chemical with heat to color and protect the surface of the plaque and apply the wax and reinstall the stainless steel hardware. And the present hardware is failing and discoloring, and so this broad plaque will be preserved.
I can show you before and afters if you guys want them. He did.
Could you email them?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
What are those plaques made out of? Bronze.
It's bronze.
They're old.
I mean, it seems like if we have these, it's our job to maintain them, so.
I agree. Well, originally it was done by the Legion and has gone disrepair.
Well, if they're not doing it, then someone's gotta go.
I think we should, I think as part of our history, I'd like to make a motion that we also clean the Legion Memorial Park plaque. Questions? Discussion?
I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, I'm a mere rec.
Take one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Great, spring cleanup.
Now, I don't have a schedule on, just so you know. But I am assuming while he's here, he'll do it. We're gonna go into resolutions. Brandy?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about our amendment to the village accessibility?
Sure.
Please.
This is the one that, like, that we're currently doing right now?
Yes.
Out front?
Yeah.
So the, the construction of the accessibility improvements in front of Village Hall, the fire department are underway right now. And while we were doing a pre-construction meeting, Chief Neff said, "I'd love it if it'd be possible to improve the curbs that are on his apron that go from where the sidewalk project will end back towards the building, to the face of the building." So these are the curbs that are perpendicular from the street into the building.
Literally like right here?
Yes, and if you take a look at them, they're in various states of failure. And it'd be nice at some point if the whole apron would be replaced, but the curbs are doing kind of a poor job of defining the edge of the apron now. And so the contractor gave the chief a quote, which I believe we forwarded to you, for $2,700 to replace those curbs concurrent with the work that's occurring while the team is mobilized and all of that. The way to do this so that the village has the necessary protections that the contract with Contech affords you, and that we have protections and the contractor has protections, is to make a change order submitted to the contract. The fire chief has indicated the fire department has the funds to pay for this additional money, so it's not additional.
I'm gonna correct that, the fire department doesn't have the funds. We have the funds, the fire department.
It's in the fire department fund.
Yes.
I will let Karen.
If they want to pay for it, I'll gladly accept that offer.
They, they want it to be out of their fund. And as you know, this, this project is a patchwork of grant-funded elements. So if the board is amenable to approving the change, the contract change order, we'll increase the value of the contract by $2,700. And we will have the contractor amend their schedule of values to indicate a specific line item for this element so that it's very clear in their pay request when they've completed that line item so that Karen can handle the proper fund transfers.
That's great.
And it also extends the end date, right?
Yes, concurrently because of weather and DOT and things like that, the contract end date in the original schedule that we got appears like is getting pushed out. So we're using this same opportunity to extend the end date for the contract.
I'm so glad we sent out an email today saying that it was gonna end on April 30th.
That's all right. Tonight, we're mending that. You were absolutely correct today.
I know, today it was April 30th.
Do we have any date or is it?
Things will change.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, I'll get that to you.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment to our village accessibility improvement contract for the addition of, to include the curbs on the firehouse for $2,700 coming out of our account for the village fire, village fire department.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question for Brandy. The extension of this, are we still okay with the Duxes County block grant timeframe? Or do we need to file for an extension with them?
Let me double-check that. If we need to file an extension, we'll follow up with you. We did tell the county that we were going to make this amendment, but I did not have a specific conversation with them about the reimbursements.
Good question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, moving on. AIM resolution. You heard us talk earlier about our budget, right? And in that, if you didn't catch it, we've been working hard to keep our revenues up with our budget, and one of the things we count on is funding from the state. There is a fund line out, line item, which is called aid and incentives from municipalities, AIM, which we get every year, but has not increased at all over time since, I don't, I can't, I can't put a table on it. Right.
Over 10.
Over 10. And as all of our costs arise, this, so there, this is a memorializing kind of resolution to send to the state of New York for all municipalities. And NICOM, which is our legal representation and does a lot of, you know, work for us on a half of cities and villages, have put out this resolution calling for an increase in AIM funding from the state of New York. We're going through a budget process, they are going through a budget process, it's time for them to pay up. It's time for them to increase the AIM funding that villages and cities get so that it can benefit all of us. It's been an argument that they've done every year, and this year, I would like to be one of the villages that's signed on to this resolution that'll go to Governor Kathy Hochul and the Senate Majority Leader and everybody else up there to let them know that we are, we are in agreement with NICOM to have an increase in our AIM funding.
Well, second to that. Are you kidding me? Build a billion-dollar stadium and don't give us any more money?
So, this did happen, it's been 15 years, I'm sorry. Been 15 years, according to Bureau of Labor Statistics. And during that time, inflation had increased by 45%.
And how many mandates have they dumped on us without giving us the money to pay for them?
A gazillion.
A gazillion.
I'm sorry.
That's underestimating.
Right. All right, so I make a, a motion to sign this resolution to send to the state for increasing AIM funding. Second. I'll get it. Any others? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, state of New York. In advance.
We love you, state of New York.
Vanessa, you're up.
Um, Kathy? Oh, I'm just looking at the folder, I don't see the resolution in there, Martina. Okay. So, as you know, we've been working on the Climate Action Planning Institute's process for developing a government operations climate action plan. And this builds off of all the data that we collected for our greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So, for this piece of the project, we're just talking about government operations. So, that includes heating and cooling, municipal buildings, it includes fuel for our vehicles, and it even does look at the commute associated with employees getting to their jobs here in the village. The climate action plan that we've put together identifies what we think is, is the most impactful course for how to address these emissions. And it, and it tries to really formulate a plan that is actionable, that is doable. Now, we know some of these projects are gonna rely on grant funding, so the plan, plan also states that this is not, this is not a legally binding plan, but this is what we would like to do, this is the target that we wanna shoot for. So, tonight, I would like to make a motion to officially adopt this climate action plan for government operations.
Second.
I think this is perfect, yeah.
I think it's great.
Discussion? Yep.
It's the next logical step, and you've been very methodical about going about this, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Vanessa, all your hard work.
Yeah, it was a great presentation once, a couple months ago. Wonderful.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. At some year again, when our attorneys tell us they want more money. We've been using Thomas Drawan Waxman and Pedro and Mail, Mailey, for as long as I've been here and probably close to 20 years as our labor attorney here in the village of Rhinebeck. I know several of us have worked, I know Rick has worked with them and so have others in terms of negotiating our contract and negotiating our contract recently with the police department. We rely on them to help guide us through that path. I think it's been a great working relationship. We haven't disagreed, and we've been successful in all of the contracts that we've negotiated so far, working with them to the benefit of both, both parties. So, they've asked for an increase. At this time of year, we invite our clients of any anticipated charges and fees for the coming year for the period of June 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2025. They are proposing a $10 increase in the basic hourly rate to provide legal services to the village of Rhinebeck. Therefore, the hourly rate for attorneys will increase from 235 to 245, and the hourly rate for paralegal services will increase from 110 to 120. A minimum of one quarter of an hour should be billed for each service performed. So, it's if you call them and ask a simple question.
15 minutes?
It's 15 minutes on the clock, okay?
Sounds good.
Bills will be presented on a monthly basis and are payable on receipt.
So moved.
I'd like, I didn't make the motion, but I need to make the motion, seconded by Lydia, to accept the legal fees. Any discussion?
They've given us good advice.
Great, it'll take me $10.
All in favor say aye.
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 Lydia, you're up.
Tis the season for sidewalk dining. Once again, in anticipation of a full zoning code change as a result of the comp plan, I am suggesting that we do a temporary sidewalk dining for 2024 to duplicate exactly what we've done in the past, over the past two summers. Two tops hugging buildings unless there's no parking next to the curb. The Chamber of Commerce has asked that we do this again. We received no complaints that I know of from last year. And I think our zoning office did, our enforcement officer did a good job of managing the restaurants that went off the rails a little bit. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution authorizing sidewalk dining for 2024.
Second.
Just so you know, the state liquor authority, the state has suspended a part of the state liquor authority's rules. And I didn't know this until Ron Hicks told me a few weeks ago, but they've been doing it actually since COVID, and they've extended it to July of 2025 where you can actually cross a public way with alcohol. But, so that's why in Hudson and in New York City, you see these restaurants that are still taking up space in the, on the street. Because the SLA has, has been allowed to suspend that particular part of their law. I did have a conversation with the chamber about potentially tweaking these regulations for that, but we realized with the width of our sidewalks and with the proximity to parked cars and all the rest of it, that there was sort of no point in allowing our restaurants that, none of them would be able to take advantage of it without having car doors back into their diners. So, we decided to just let it lie the way it has been very successful for the past few years. But in case anybody says, "Hey, I heard that the SLA did this thing." Now you know that this is what the SLA has been authorized to do. It has been a temporary law on the part of the state, year over year, to allow the SLA to do this. So, you know, it is not something that should be reflected in any kind of permanent code decision, but we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
So, this might control.
Yeah, sounds like it, it's probably been continued for the last 50 years. So, that's all I have to say about that.
So, motion to?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Or a discussion? Any other discussion?
Adopt.
All in favor say aye.
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 John?
Hello. So, I just thought I'd make a motion.
What?
I just thought I'd make a motion.
You can preamble or?
I would like to do, well, we can do that in discussion.
Sure.
Just want to make a motion to pass the village of Rhinebeck's social media policy.
I seconded it.
Thank you. I'd like to hear some discussion on this. Or I could pontificate for a long time.
Can you pontificate for a short amount of time?
I could, I could definitely do that. The reason why I've been doing this?
Do the highlights.
Sure. The reason why we're doing this is to get everyone on the same page. We support social media and the use of social media as a way of engaging the public. This is all about verification and making sure that people are, understand that this is a, an official, an official social media site. So, we want an official email account to start that process. Social media site should link back to the official website as much as possible. The website should be the dominant place still for people to get information from the village. Point out that not all forms of social media may be appropriate for the use of, for the village. So, that's something that the mayor, the village clerk, in consultation with the village board, should discuss. And then we go over a number of things that could restrict the right of someone to use our social media, which have to do with, you know, promoting violence, profanity, obscenity, hateful or threatening content and the like. So, this just puts us on the same, all on one page. I am a very big proponent of centralized social media and a centralized communication management. I think the more you diffuse that and have separate sites, even if they're part of the village, I think they become more difficult to manage over time. And they become diffuse, and I also think they can confuse the public. I also think centralization is, is the best way to build momentum, to get more people to a specific site, and then they branch off from there. We do have some existing, or at least one existing site, that, that's, that's been very popular, and I think the reason why we wrote it the way we did it is to kind of grandfather that in, and this will be the policy going forward.
So, this is only for village-approved committees. It's not a village-sanctioned committee. You can't do it.
Think early on, okay.
Right?
I do wanna say we've also added a search engine to our, the village website that did come up at, at some point the year that there was a need for that, and I agree. A little, I don't know, little trivia fact, most websites, if you go to their main page and put backslash search, you will get the search options. Actually, we, we already, it was, you could conceivably have done that on our website if you would've known to do it, but obviously, what people look for is a little box, and so we put the little box in. Little trivia.
This, this complements, this is for official village use. This complements where you have social media policy for ourselves and for employees.
This?
No, this is not an employee policy.
No, this is not, I'm saying, we already have one.
Correct.
We already have one, this is for village function, official village function.
Wait, do we have one or do we not have one?
We do not have one.
We don't have?
I thought we did have one. We do not have one.
We have one for a police department.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Can we extend that?
This could be used in that regard.
We were, and the, the union, the UPS EU wanted to adopt the same thing that we were using for the police department. So, that was the plan going forward.
Okay.
Martina, we have it for the website already? What was the, what do we have for?
We have internet email.
Internet email, we have one. So, this would be for social media.
So, anybody using this would be required to sign this document, by the way. And they go through my office to be able to do that.
Okay, cool, cool.
And it also points out certain basic common stuff and stuff, like if you're creating something like this and it is, it is something that's been sanctioned by the village, the seal should be used, things that, that send signals to people that this is an official. You just wanna do as much as you can to it, there's a lot of fake news out there. You just want people to know that this is actually coming from the village.
The village of Rhinebeck blah, 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 blah.
Right.
Right? Village of Rhinebeck blah, blah, blah. Can do, and that would be an official name to go forward on their social media.
Exactly.
And if they wanna use any, any type of social media, it has to get approval, whether it's Facebook, Instagram, it has to go through that approval process.
We only have a Facebook account, the village has a Facebook account.
Yeah, you know what?
But you have?
The Climate Smart Rhinebeck Task Force has Instagram and Facebook.
And Facebook? And the fire department has Instagram and?
Their own, yes, outside of the village.
Oh, Rhinebeck has one?
The fire department.
Yeah. Our fire department is a visibly owned fire department. Rhinebeck Inc. is a nonprofit.
Rhinebeck Inc. is a nonprofit, so Rhinebeck Inc. is the, so, is that?
I think so, the holder of the social media. But I'm not sure about that.
And ideally, we'd be on more platforms, but I will address this, be very frank, that you, you need, you need several things. You need content creation, someone to be able to do that, and you need management of it.
You need someone to monitor the comments.
And, and that's what I mean by management. So, but it did come up earlier this year, someone had commented on one of the sites, I'm not sure about why I wanted us to be beyond on Facebook, and I don't mind addressing that. We're in a very polarized situation, this, this presidential election is gonna get as even more intense going forward. And anecdotally, and I'm sure there are studies that show this, that there, there are people that will disengage on Facebook and on what used to be called Twitter and X because of that, but they're, they're less likely to come off of LinkedIn or Instagram. It's, I don't think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a huge deal for us, but, but if I were going to answer, and I guess I am answering that question, if that person's out there, that's my answer. I want them to know that, that I, I don't, I don't think it's good just to be on one platform. Also, I think a lot of people feel like there's just not enough information being disseminated. I would argue that there's too much information that they're getting hit with every day, and that seeing it, being repetitive, but on different platforms and having people see different, the same thing on a different platform, might actually drive home the point to the point where they, they remember it, like, you know, stop signs going in or whatever, whatever it is that we're, we're telling people that we're doing. So, I think that's really, that's another thing to consider. But again, that's the ideal, and it's neat, it's really easy to have a lot of great idea, ideas and ideals, but unless you have the staff or, you know, someone that you can identify that can actually do the work, you have to watch about setting yourself up for that expectation, the public expectation that you create in the site, where's the content? Sorry, that's the pontification part, by the way.
Thank you, appreciate that.
But, I'm just gonna add into it, this drives consistency so that we're all saying the same thing. And that's what we wanna make sure. We don't wanna make sure, we don't want an organization going out saying one thing when the village's position is something else.
Right.
And we need to maintain that control.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it drives that back to the, that's why, the reason for a centralized kind of review.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you for pulling it together. Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. I didn't make a resolution for this, but we have, I thought it was simple enough. We have five, we have five chainsaws in the fire department that they would like to surplus, and we'd like to put them on the surplus, on our existing surplus list. And I'd like to make a motion to surplus these five chainsaws from the village of Rhinebeck Fire Department.
Second.
Discussion?
Does that also include auctioning them?
They're surplus, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not an automatic though, there's multiple. Would you like to put them on the auction website to then?
Sure, yes, I guess, that's what I assumed. We can get 50 bucks.
Well, you could do a sealed bid, you could do auction, you could do scrap, you could do.
Auction. Auction.
Auction, okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Lydia, you wanna talk about the rescheduling?
Sure.
Thank you.
With deepest apologies to the public, due to a variety of absences and illnesses, the disability tax exemption public hearing that was supposed to be happening tonight did not get notified properly, and so, we didn't have it tonight. So, I'd like to make a motion to reschedule it. I think for our May meeting, given how busy April is looking.
It's the budget season, I agree.
Yeah. So, for the May, May 14th meeting, I'm not concerned about this delay because, for two reasons. One, we need to pass it sometime before March 1st, 2025, to have it effective for the 2025 tax year. So, not doing it in April doesn't make it any later. And two, when we were doing the research about the disability tax exemption, the town, which has already passed theirs, and so therefore, has already gathered all of the information on the people who would qualify for it, and because villagers pay town taxes, they know about the villagers, there's nobody currently who has identified themselves to the town who would qualify for the disability tax exemption who lives in the village. So, I'm not concerned about this delay because there's nobody currently identified who would take advantage of it in 2024, so I'm okay with this. But I do apologize for the confusion. Sometimes, our small village hall drops the ball. And I will take responsibility if anybody wants to lay it on somebody's shoulders. So, I'd like to make a motion to reschedule for this tax, the disability tax exemption hearing for May 14th at 6:00 PM.
Second. Any other discussion? We did say at, when we introduced this, that this would be for the 2025, so that's not new news.
No, that's not new news, but I just wanna remind everybody of that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. And I'll make sure to have it, an updated draft, everybody, well before that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I talk about the vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, great.
This is amendment to the schedule.
Yes, this is an amendment to the, to the agenda. Mostly because I spent all of February being completely insane, and then the beginning of March, really sick. This is coming in a little late, but our, once a year, the, we have a, we, once a year, someone on the planning board and someone on the ZBA's term concludes. And we, Gary and I, may. And we, Gary and I made the decision a few years ago that instead of just automatically reappointing a person, we would open the position to see if there was anybody interested in joining either one of those boards. And if the person who still holds the position would like to continue to hold the position, sometimes we reappoint and sometimes we don't. So I would like to make a motion to open, to open a.
A planning board and ZBA position.
To open a planning board and a ZBA position.
Until when?
Ideally until like, honestly, March twenty fifth. Can we give people two weeks?
Do we get the notice out and get?
Yeah, you can get that tomorrow.
Can you get the notice out tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
March twenty fifth.
Two weeks?
Maybe March twenty sixth, and then we can talk about it during our meeting on March twenty seventh.
I mean.
The problem is I don't want to leave the position vacant.
We have a bench.
We do have a bench, I feel terrible.
If we need a bench, we have a bench.
That is true. Can we have the position go until the twenty sixth and see what we get in two weeks? And if we want to reopen it on the twenty seventh?
Okay, yeah, I'm just worried it's not enough time to get the message out.
It's already drafted.
It's already drafted.
I know, but.
Yeah, I hear.
End of day, okay.
And so I promise next year I will do this in February.
Well, there's a lot, just a lot to keep track.
Hopefully next year we won't be in the middle of finalizing the draft for the comp plan in February. Oh, we need a second.
I second it.
Great.
Any discussion? So if you want to be a member of the planning board or the ZBA, come on down.
Let us know.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Right, Vanessa, CCA.
Okay, so this is a process called community choice aggregation, otherwise known as CCA. And in a nutshell, it gives the municipality, in this case the village board, the ability to source renewable energy as the default energy source within a jurisdiction. So that's what we're talking about here. It is a bit of a process overseen by the Public Service Commission, but the, the first step is really to pass what they call enabling legislation, which gives us the option to move forward with the project, though we don't have to if we decide not to. It's just enabling legislation. So on the cloud, I put together like a, like a one sheet explainer document about why we're considering this and a little bit more background on what community choice aggregation is. And we have a draft of the legislation. Rich Bolson, our attorney, is looking at it. But he said that we could open up for, we could set a date for a public hearings. Because this is a local law, we do need to do a public hearing. So I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to set a date for the public hearing.
Second.
And I'd love to discuss, because I'm here, this is, this is the big step.
This has been successfully implemented in the town.
Many municipalities.
No, Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck town specifically, yes.
They, different process, they have a CCA, yes.
Yeah, they have a CCA and they've selected, they have an administrator, they've got, this is a process. And they are, they're done, they have, they are now the default. Yeah, there's.
And that doesn't, like, were the doormat hole in this particular?
Yes.
Weird, okay.
Yeah.
I'll just speak personally, as communications guy in the city of McKipsey, we have that in the city and when they, when the common council went to implement it, I always, always think about the ramifications on staff and everything. And I thought, you have to, you have to opt out, you know, they, they opt you in, and I thought.
And do the little property owners have to opt out?
Yes.
Yeah, by default, you're opted in.
By default, and so I, one, I first had some philosophical problems with that after a minute, I did, I just did. And then two, on a practical level, I was fearing that the mayor's office was going to get a lot of phone calls and a lot of people, and that didn't happen at all. I mean, I, I was really surprised, we got no blowback at all and people, there's a process, they could opt out and, and as Vanessa pointed out, you're already, you're already being opted into Central Hudson or whoever, right? So there's already, by default, you're already being opted into someone right now.
No, 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 you're, when you sign CCA, you opt into whatever contract we signed to opt into.
Yeah, Gary, his point is like, right now, Central Hudson's making that decision.
Exactly, that's, if I didn't articulate that way, I'm sorry.
You can now choose from Central Hudson.
You can choose, but the point is, it's, it's already being done in a sense, you know, now you have to opt out of this, but you're already being, it's already, it's already chosen for you unless you decide to choose differently.
That's true.
And I just want to point out also that within the.
I got it right.
Within the, within the New York state legislation that enables this, there are a number of rules about how much communication needs to be done with the public. So every rape pair, if we enacted this, went forward, would be receiving a letter and public outreach is mandatory as part of this process. So that may be one of the reasons why you can get it automatic, because there is, in the way this is, in the law, it is baked in that there must be aggressive public outreach about what's going on.
Well, that's good. So the process would be to, to do the public hearing, to hear from the community if this is something that they're in favor of. And then if we do adopt the enabling legislation, then the next step is to put out an RFP. So the RFP would be for an administrator, so this is a nonprofit that would work with us on things like the public outreach, on doing research, on how to get the best deal that we can possibly find. So again, this is like a multi-step process, this is not happening tomorrow. But yeah, so we can, we'll continue this conversation, but for tonight, I'd like to set a date for the public hearing.
What are you looking at?
What things you want, what things you want to pick?
Sorry, scrub mag.
We already seconded to adopt, do you want to do it as two things? Because we seconded to adopt the enabling legislation, we had discussion.
Well, do you want to just.
No, we're, we're, the only resolution we're doing is setting the public hearing. We're not adopting the resolution today, we're just adopting.
Yeah, the resolution is to set the public hearing.
Okay, resolution, alright, that's, alright, okay.
I see you drafted March, ha, ha, ha.
Oh, no, no, yes.
Drafted being the opposite word in a sense.
Well, next Tuesday's the election, the twenty sixth, there's a public hearing at six thirty, there's a budget meeting at five.
So let's not do March.
Yeah. April first, there's a budget meeting and the org meeting on the second, there's a public hearing and a board meeting on the ninth.
Twenty third?
Gary is away.
I mean, we could do it the same night that we have the tax exemption.
Yeah, that's like a, that's like a.
In May?
Yeah.
That's not.
That are going to be in May.
Our May meeting.
Our May meeting?
May fourteenth.
So you want two public hearings?
Sure.
Wait one second, hang on, so let's, Eleanor, get to you, hang on. So let's continue this March.
I know you don't want that.
I don't think the, the tax exemption is going to be particularly long.
We could set it for like six fifteen, if the tax exemption goes over.
Six.
Well, no, because then we have to like disrupt ourselves in case disability, like, nobody said anything about the senior tax exemption. Literally not a comment on the senior tax exemption.
Yeah, I don't think, I can't see either taking that that long.
So six fifteen is work, would work.
Yeah. I broke her.
What is this?
Okay, we're talking about six fifteen, maybe fourteen.
May fourteen.
CCA, public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Martina.
May fourteen.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eleanor, what's your question?
I just wanted to comment.
Eleanor, if you're going to, is, is this a comment or, I'm, what are you trying to?
No, I want a suggestion because I saw some feedback and claiming that the people who were on the town CCA, their bills doubled and all that kind of stuff. So I was just going to suggest to maybe somebody to talk to the town and see what the story was behind that.
I spoke to Supervisor Spintia and she said I'm unaware of any, at least the coming up official comments that they've had. So as far as she concerns.
So far seventy-two percent of the people in the town have signed, have stayed in the CCA that they adopted. Seventy-two percent.
Twenty-eight percent.
And you can opt out at any time.
No, I get that, I'm just saying it might be not a bad idea to find out what the complaints were and what the truth is behind them.
Okay.
Thank you all. Okay, daycare centers. Bring us up to speed on what you want to do here.
Okay, so there are three different kinds of daycare entities that are overseen by the state agency that oversees daycare entities. Two of them are daycare businesses that can be run out of a person's home. And the third one is something called a daycare center, which is not run out of a person's home. Our zoning code currently allows for the two domiciled daycare businesses, but it does not allow for a daycare center anywhere inside village limits.
Wow.
I asked Tim Decker about it, he thinks it was an oversight. So.
Don't do daycare centers with nursery schools.
Yeah, yes, we are allowed to have educational uses, we're allowed to have domicile daycares, but we're not allowed to have daycare centers. So we've been approached by a daycare center out of Red Hook that would like to move to Rhinebeck and they were basically like, hey, hey. And so I've, Gary and I have had a conversation, I've talked to our, I've talked to Ken Goffman about this, I've talked to our zoning attorney about this. And it would be a very simple update to the zoning code that I would like to, given the aforementioned illness plague at the beginning of March, I would like to introduce, I would like to introduce our meeting on the twenty seventh of May.
No, March.
March, twenty seventh of March, and I'll just, we can just have a big party dinner then. But the idea behind it would be to allow, at the moment, we allow an educational use in the village center and in the Gateway District and in none of the other areas of the village. And so basically I was going to, my idea was to mimic that for daycare centers, village center and Gateway District. And so that's the idea. So because it's, it's a change in the zoning code, we would have to set a public hearing, we would have to go to the county and all the rest of it, but I wanted to introduce the idea that this was happening and then we can actually set the public hearing, we can pass a resolution to set the public hearing on March twenty seventh.
Could we include in our zoning code, do we have a, do we have a zone or an area for schools? Because like, what is.
So, yeah, so educational use, yeah, it's the same. So I was just going to mimic.
But edu, but the daycare, because it's not a school, could be in one of those school zones. See what I'm saying?
So like, an actual daycare center itself could be considered an educational use or the daycare center would be in the same zone that allows for an educational use?
The latter.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking of doing.
Okay.
Yeah, got it. Specifically, they want to move it to where the old commercials school used to be and that's in the Gateway District. And a school is allowed there, but a daycare center is not allowed there. So we would change the Gateway Center, the Gateway District to allow for daycare centers.
There was language floating around that this has already occurred and just for the public, this has not occurred.
Yeah, there was some, there was some reporting saying that it is moving to Rhinebeck. It is, it is not moving to Rhinebeck, it is trying to move to Rhinebeck, put it that way.
Right.
And we're trying to help them.
Well, it's not to tell them, it's anything that would.
Yeah, it just sort of seemed like a missing in our zoning code, that we would allow schools and we would allow domiciled daycares, but we wouldn't allow sort of what seems to me like the bit in the middle, which is.
Probably are tables, if it's not stated, it's therefore allowed.
Yeah, if it's defined in the code, but it's not in the table, then you can't shoe it in somewhere else. Yeah, right. So, it's just sort of the way our zoning code's written.
So that's just information.
So that's, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Moving on. Special requests, we have.
Grants.
Grants.
Oh, did I miss that part?
Bottom.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry, grants.
Okay, so the building off of our, our participation in the Climate Action Planning Institute, they're, they're, they put out a call to all of the municipalities that are participating. Hey, okay, you've done this climate action plan and you've done your greenhouse gas emissions inventory, now let's help, try to help you get the project done. So one of the biggest contributors of greenhouse gas emissions is this building and the big old furnace in the basement. And so we've discussed the idea of upgrading the HVAC for this building, it's very expensive, but with this particular grant application going in with, with the cohort, we might have a chance for, for getting the money. No guarantees, of course. But the sweet thing about this is we can, we're requesting that we put in for the full amount of the project with no match required.
It's a one hundred percent grant, that's the point.
Right, yeah.
Which is unique, right.
Which is sort of unheard of. So, and we don't, and I don't yet have, I don't yet have an answer on, because basically the CAPPY folks are pulling together all these different requests from all these municipalities and then rolling it up to a total number to see where it lands. So I would like to make a motion that Mayor Bassett sign this letter of interest and that we would send the letter only if we're able to apply for the full amount.
Second. Any discussion?
This one's a no-brainer, in my opinion, because it's a hundred percent if we can get it.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'll play a little devil's advocate, what if they came back and said we need a ten percent match? Are we saying that we're not doing it?
We don't have it.
No.
We don't have it, alright. We can't.
What's your devil's advocate?
We can't keep spending money.
Yeah.
Right. Or, with the budget concerns, the answer is no.
It's a, it's an EPA grant to upgrade the building.
Yeah, the EPA, so it's a federal grant, Environmental Protection Agency, CPRG, Climate Pollution Reduction Grant.
That's right, yeah, thank you.
So the idea is that by rolling it up with all these other municipalities, we have a better chance of actually winning the grant because of, I don't know, EPA gives bigger grants.
There was a minimum size.
It's a two million dollar minimum for this grant.
Impact.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, this organization was trying to limit everybody to five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So we're going in over and above five hundred thousand and holding that up.
That's something like, oh, okay.
They'll, they'll slide that in.
We'll see.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll sign the letter. Now, we want to.
Almost there.
Easter's coming. We have one special request and it is from the Rhinebeck Lions Club and it's to do an Easter egg hunt.
Excellent.
The event date is March twenty third, start, setup time is at eight thirty, start time is ten AM, end time is eleven AM. Alright, so it's at our village of Rhinebeck Mini Park from ten to eleven on March twenty third. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Lions Club Easter egg hunt. Any discussions?
I just wanted to raise something that I did get some feedback from some folks on the Climate Smarter Task Force, that ideally, this event, which I think the kids love because there's candy, ideally it doesn't involve a lot of single-use plastic, like plastic eggs that, that just get tossed. And, and so like, I don't know if we want to be handed about that, but we're, we're trying to celebrate Earth, Earth Day coming up and, and that's, that is a concern.
Has anybody Googled "barbecueable Easter eggs" yet?
That's my question.
I'm looking it up right now.
Here, here, mine's a decision to that.
They're expensive.
Take it to the Lions Club.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not our decision.
Can we?
If you want, you can take it to the Lions Club.
Can we sort of approve this with a written hope that they will consider using non-single-use plastic as part of the Easter egg?
I just suggested they take it to the Lions Club. There's like two weeks to go.
The Climate Smart.
If they have an interest, let them take it, let the two clubs
Yeah.
Throw eggs. Okay?
Okay.
Agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do people not actually search for like real diodes anymore? I used to do that when I was a kid.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 23rd
Should I just date myself? Don't feel that old, I feel really old.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 23rd, 24th. Come on, roll those dud, don't lose it now. Special meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I also like to approve the special meetings for 214, 24, 227, 24, and 228, 24, if you don't think we meet a lot. All in favor say aye.
I have to abstain from 28.
Sorry. The 20, the 27th, is that the afternoon?
214 was a regular meeting, 227, yeah, was an afternoon meeting, and 228 was a
Yeah, I was at everyone, the afternoon one, so I'm going to abstain from that one, if I can do it that way.
I have to abstain from the one that I was at.
What, what, hang on. Everyone's good for 214?
Yes.
Okay. 227?
That was the 6 Mulberry one, I think we were all there.
No.
No, John was not there.
John was not.
No, 6 Mulberry, I was there.
Yeah, John was at 6 Mulberry.
227 was the
Was 6 Mulberry.
Yes, yes, was 6 Mulberry.
Okay. I was there.
Wasn't there a 2 in the afternoon meeting that?
That's 228.
No, that was 2
That's the one I was at.
Yeah, I was there.
Sorry. That was on, oh, I'm looking at the long line, I must be. I'm sorry, we're looking at February, not March, yes, you're right. Got it. Got it, got it, got it.
Martina, you got it all?
We like to
I submitted all of them.
All in favor say aye.
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 Rick, Tree Commission.
The rest of the tree commission report, the next meeting is a week from tomorrow.